The one that I have for the, I bring it to you?
Good.
Oh, yes, I will definitely. Okay.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Rackliff City Council Work Session for March 11th, 2019 at 5:00 PM here at Rackliff City Hall. If you'll please rise for the invocation. You remember Mr. Pike?
Good Lord, thank you for the day and for all of our many blessings here in the city. We ask that you give the mayor and the council wisdoms they consider the city's business. Thank you for all of your blessings again and crescing. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. England, if you'll call roll, please.
Barbara Baker.
Present.
Pam Deroch.
Here.
Edward Palmer. Tanya Seabrooks.
Here.
Kim Thompson.
Here.
Chris Yates.
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Pam, I did say hello to you earlier.
Hey.
How are you? You're the only one I think I missed. Councilman Palmer has said that he would not be able to make it today, but I did speak to him on the phone and so he gives his blessing on everything that I've said. I just don't know what I said, so. He doesn't know what I just said either, so. But we'll start off, as we talked about last time, I wanted to get into a little bit of the budget and give you all kind of an update of where we are, where we're at, and I guess hopefully where we'll be at, at the end of this cycle. So I put together a PowerPoint. I don't know, Toby? Can you all, would you mind turning that just this way, just a little bit? Yeah. So the council can see that. That's good. Don't pull it off the wall, Toby. I just want you to turn it. That's good. That's good.
Thanks.
And so, starting off, we're going to talk about our city budget. And so, I took over this budget, as you all know, starting January 1st, 2019. So six months of this budget, of course, was previous administration's budget, but it's a budget which you all approved. These numbers are based on January 31st. So the reason they are is because of the way our payroll runs. And so, I'll have after March 22-ish, actually, am I right? Somewhere in there, after the next payroll, the February ones kind of come in, so that's how we base this on. We have seven departments, which we'll be discussing. We'll take a look at the reserve fund, and we'll look at the current bond payments the city has obligated, and then we'll look at the unbudgeted expenses. So first, our total operations budget is 12.7 million. Administration is 890,600 dollars. Police is 4.8 million. Fire is 2.766. Parks and Rec is 712,000. Public Works is 2.9. Now, this includes the municipal aid fund, road fund money, and the Centennial Grant, which kind of overbloviated that budget.
Overbloviated?
New word I learned.
Thank you for letting us know that.
And then the Economic and Planning Development, which that is still how it's listed on the budget, and that's at 563,000. And then our Stormwater budget, which is not a part of the 2.7, that's a separate budget, but I included it here, is almost 1.2 million. Excuse me, almost 2 million. Excuse me, 1.9. All right, so.
Hold on, can you leave it up there for?
Yeah, sure.
Those were being minutes.
Yeah. And if you want me to, I can give you a copy of these slides.
That's what I was just.
If you all want to do that, that way you don't have to try to write everything out. I can make you a copy of this and put it, email it to your inbox.
Well, after we done that 34 hours, why you say that again?
It was fun, let's watch, do it.
So we look at the administration budget. Now, the administration includes the mayor's office and the finance department, most of the departments downstairs. Okay, so currently, it's actually 8.6 percent over budget, and that's as of January 31st. This is due to the development of the Red Hill Cutlery Lot, the road and the corner wall expense, which is not budgeted. So this was the land sale that was done, that you all did for the Red Hill Cutlery Road. The way that they did this budget, they put this in the administration side. And so, that's what's putting the.
Why would that have been under administration?
I don't know, that's just how it was budgeted, how they put it in there. So, now, the total cost of that area is 188,755 dollars. This percentage is likely to increase, and I'm talking about the 8.6, because the remaining due that is unbudgeted is totaling 118,000. So, now, keep in mind that we did get 50,000 of that from the lot, from the sale of the lot, and in the anticipation that another corner lot will sell.
Now, that 50 is already included in.
Part of it is, yes. Because that's actually about 100, was it 37? That's about 37,000 difference there. So, part of the road has already been built using the 50. They've expended about 47,000. Toby's at right, somewhere in there? Yeah. So, of the 50 that was collected.
But that's what I'm saying, we collected the whole 50.
We collected the whole 50. Clear. And so, the remaining to finish out that road, the drainage, the blacktop and everything's going to be about 118,000. That's unbudgeted. That way you all know.
118,000.
And that comes out of the administration budget, and that's just how I think Chance probably keyed it in, or put it in the budget as a line item.
That we still need for the road.
Well, drainage.
And drainage.
Yeah, drainage, curb and gutter, blacktop, surface.
Okay.
Yep. And now, keep in mind, that was an obligation that was committed to the Basham family.
Right.
For the sale of that.
So we got to come up.
All right, next is the police department. Currently, the police department's at 4.8, and they are running at, and those minuses aren't minuses, those are just bullet points, and unfortunately, the minuses just show up as the minus, it's not. They're at 2.3 percent under budget as of January 31st. Thank you, chief. You should take credit for it. Our fire department is at 2.766, and actually, he is right on budget. He couldn't, you couldn't be off, I mean, you're just right on it. So, thank you, chief, appreciate it. Parks and Recs, they're at 712. Now, they're actually 1.3 over, and the way that shows in that line item, I think, Tim, you actually, it was like about a $1,600, $1,500 difference, but that was money that he actually got donated back in, and so I think it'll fluctuate out after the numbers come back. So, he's running pretty good. Now, Public Works is actually doing well. Public Works at 2.9 million, they're actually 5.1 percent under budget. And some of that has to do with not purchasing the salt, because our salt right now is running good, stuff like that, some contract labor, so he's, they're running pretty good right now. Now, the Economic Development Planning Budget, 563,000. Now, we are 1.8 percent over budget, and some of that had to do with the anticipated capital expense of a $6,200 platter copier, which actually broke.
Right.
This past year, and wasn't able to be replaced, and so we had to make that purchase.
For the record, this is your budget.
Six months of it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I saw that. Yeah, and see, I wasn't afraid to put it up earlier. And so, we did make that purchase, we had to have the platter in that department, and so that was a capital expense. Now, thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Councilman Yates, but currently, the position of economic development planner, there will be a savings of about 42,600 dollars, which is not reflected in that 1.8 percent overage. Next is Stormwater, that's what we talked about, and that's at 1.9 million. It's actually running 11.2 percent over budget. Toby, is there a reason why you got up and ran outside?
No, come on back.
Now, the majority of this overage is due to the upfront purchasing of materials and product costs, and this will level out towards the end of the budget cycle, because the way that Stormwater purchases their materials, they buy everything upfront, and so that always throws the budget off, but after the Stormwater fees start coming in throughout the year, it levels itself back out. This also includes now the wood debris collection, the $18,500 that came out in December. Now, that's also included in that 11.2 percent. Reserves, as of June 30th, 2018, the reserves is 3.7.
I'm going to say. Okay.
You good? 3.7, and the reason we do June 30th is that they're last budget, because we won't know anything until the next cycle. Stormwater currently has 437,000, but waiting for the reimbursement for FEMA for 182, which will bring that total up to 619,000 in reserves for Stormwater. Don't tell me when to go, I'm good.
Okay.
Good. All right, debt and service. So these are the bond payments that we currently have. We've got a $450,000 debt service. That payment a year is 118,000, and it will retire August of 2020.
That's all the bonds?
No. Next is the 1.1. This is a debt service, 123,500, $500 a year, and that will retire of July 2025.
Do you know what these are for?
Yes, ma'am, I do. This one is the Walmart Neighborhood Market design.
The first one?
The second one. The first one was 450, which was borrowed for road fund, and then the purchase of a Public Works truck for 37,000. And that's a four-year debt service on the first one. The second one was a 10-year debt service. And then the last one is 2.9 million. This debt service is 480,000 dollars a year, and this will retire in August of 2022. This was a 20-year bond for the construction of Fire Station 1. Good? Barbara, you good? Pam?
No, I'll just have to get you later.
I'll get you a cup. Councilwoman, you had asked about the cabin?
Yes, sir.
And so, I've got it up here for you. Put a nice picture of it. It is a nice looking cabin.
I haven't been down there yet to see it. That hill scares me.
That's it. It's a nice. It's a nice looking cabin.
It does look like it.
It does look like it's just a front wall. Is it a full cabin?
Oh, it does. I didn't look at it like that, but I can see it now, you said something.
It is a full cabin, correct, sir?
It's a full cabin. What I, I walked through it.
It's like a movie, right?
Yeah. Just the front wall. The total cabin expense was 31,000. 10,000 of that was donated by Andrew Bambini. He also gave an additional 2,000 for that, and then the 21,000 is what was unbudgeted for that. And so, I spoke with our, I spoke with our Parks and Recs director, as well as the chairman of the Forestry Board, and to look at their budget and what was currently expended. I'm sorry? Can you turn this on a little bit? And so, I spoke with him about how we can also offset that 21,000, the difference in cost, and so, he's going to work closely with our Parks and Rec director over the last few months and try to not expend the total budget that has been allocated to him, which was 30,000, and so, we're going to cut that back, and hopefully, there'll be enough savings in the Parks and Rec Department Forest Under Springs that will help offset that 21,000.
So this was in under your administration?
Mine?
Yes.
No, no, you all, I think you all actually approved.
Right, but I don't remember approving that amount.
Yeah, we didn't. I remember the donation part, that's all I was trying to find out. Did you have something to indicate what that was? Because I don't remember that 21,000 additional.
Yeah, well, I mean, I guess we could pull it. Adrian Bambini donated 10 and an additional 2.
Which, and I know he does do quite a bit.
He does, which he's very generous.
So really unbudgeted is 19,000?
Yes, 21 is unbudgeted, but, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, but still, because I thought it was like a bunch of gifts involved with that. She was donating something, and he matched some money, and that's where I got confused.
Yeah, but it's, he gave 10 towards the cabin and an additional 2 later. And so, the total unbudgeted for that line item is 21, and we hope, or the intent is, is that through the public, or, excuse me, Parks and Rec Department, in that 30,000 that was allocated in the budget you all approved, we'll be able to save enough the remainder of this budget without spending it all to help offset that cost. So. Good? Good? This is just to recap the unanticipated expenses. The 118,000 for the Red Hill Cutlery area, the 18.5 for the storm debris pickup, which will come out of the Stormwater coffers, and then the 21,000 for the stowall cabin we just discussed. Stiff, I put stove wall. Why did I put stove? Stiff.
They were all here at the same time.
Stove walls up front. Overall, as of January 31st, the combined percentage of this operational budget's at 59 percent, where we should be, based on our budget, we should be at 58.3 percent, which keeps us at a difference of .7 percent, which is pretty good. Feel pretty, I mean, I'm pretty confident about that, feel okay with it. Now, this does not include any anticipated costs, which we'll be able to come over the next few months, but the overall budget seems to be on track. And so, throughout the next few months, according, even with the fire chief and the police chief and some of those budgetary items they've got that they're, what are unable to fund, we'll be able to save quite a bit of money, I think, and I think we'll be able to overcome most of any anticipated expenses. So, that is your budget recap. Any questions? Anybody? Not just one? I felt like I almost did a pretty good job, Kim.
You did, and I'm still catching up on my notes.
Now, what I forgot to mention, I was going to say something at the beginning, some of that overage, Mike Pike requested a huge increase, and he'd have to sit up here next to me. Yes, I offered him. All right.
The meeting's cut in half, so I was thinking we'd get a decrease.
Yeah. Toby, I think you're up next. All right.
Thanks, ma'am.
You're welcome.
You got that on the board?
No, I'm going to have him turn around, I'm going to let you grab this.
I may probably do a PowerPoint.
Yeah, you already got it? Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, just, yeah, go ahead and hand them out.
Thanks, Ashley.
Oh, you're on. I thought it was, he was getting it at present.
Oh, I saw that one, too.
I saw it.
Toby, you know how to pull yours up here. Tim, which one's his under? I see it there, yep. This one?
That way I know.
Might be easier than pulling your screen up.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going to give a quick overview of the FEMA project. First, we'll start off with, since we have new, one new councilwoman, who may or may not know where we come from on it, so, TJ, if you can hit the slide. We used to be down here at the, this is South Wilson Road, right at the end of Shelton. You might have seen it flooded over a number of times yourself, but this is the problem we was fighting back in, this is 2008. Couple pictures from both ends, the one on the left is looking from the south north, the one on the right is looking from the Haycraft Inn, south. These are two other rain events. I started with the city in '07, and we probably shut down the road 11 times, probably in two years. I mean, it repeatedly flooded till '09. So, and the first, I submitted the grant first in '08, was denied, and then we submitted again in '09 during the DR 1818 submittal, which was the ice storm, the 2009 ice storm, the declaration, disaster declaration. We got two grants approved that year, the FEMA, the Liberty Street Acquisition Project, which was just to acquire two houses, which there was no way we could get out of the floodplain. No matter what we did, it was going to flood repeatedly, so FEMA helped us purchase those two houses for 100, and the next slide, we'll see it, 100 and some thousand, 190 some thousand was our total contributions, 160 some thousand from FEMA. The second one was the large one, it took them almost nine years to approve, or seven years to approve that thing, and a nine-year funding cycle. So they got it in '09 and approved it in September 2015, September 17, 2015. As soon as it was approved, due to the delay between when we submitted it and afterwards, we instantly, or I instantly submitted a request for additional funds of 1.2 million, and then we also submitted a, because of the time delay between when I submitted it and when they approved it, the Walmart Basin was built. You know, so we transferred the location of one of those basins, which at the time, we called the Cato Basin, which was just directly on the other side of the road from Walmart, the Neighborhood Market Walmart, and we moved it down to what is called the Alternate Basin now. The Liberty Street Acquisition, like I said, you know, we, the process of that was 2009, the federal grant, we received 161,550. It's quite a bit of work required in that from particularly Mike, and, you know, for the, because one of them was a short sale, and dealing with mortgage companies from out of state is very hard. So once he got all those details ironed up, and we got purchases of them, the fire department burned them, and we tore them down and closed it out in January 2012. When we started the FEMA basin, we got approval September 17th, hoping for a construction to start in 2016. With the federal requirements, all the tree clearing had to be performed by March 15th of 2016 to do any construction that year. So, due to tight timeframe and basically, it helped the city purchase a couple pieces of equipment, we cleared the trees ourselves in March, had it completed between January and March of 2016. Turner Lane Basin was the first one we started on, phasing them in. Design was done on it first, so we started construction on it June 2016, and that was awarded to Philip Brothers. They completed it on June of 2017. Quiggin's Basin was next in line with the design was done and completed, and we started construction on it October of 16. And due to the size and enormity of the amount of dirt to haul out of it in different locations that went, and obviously, you know, the rain events slowed down the restoration considerably. Every time it rains, it floods, it was completed July 10th of 2018. Wilson Road Basin, we started, it was phased in kind of, the, a lot of the field on the Dixie Highway side was put in by Ram as part of their project. The actual construction that the city performed, this was the basin that the city constructed. We started our construction on July 13th of 2017, completed the streams and the restoration and all the matten on November the 7th of 2017. Wilson Road Stream Relocation, really not part of the FEMA, but I put that in there just to bring you up to speed on it. Several of these projects were only doable basically because they took a lot of field dirt, and since the FEMA basins had a lot of excess spoils, this was one area where a lot of that spoils went. You know, we moved that stream 40 feet off the, off the road along Wilson Road there, where it used to be pretty treacherous and too close, and then filled that, filled the road up and put the Centennial Connector in. That was one of the selling points and why the state was able to participate, because if all that field hadn't been in there for the Centennial Connector, that it'd been almost impossible to build that road due to the cost. We put the box, we cleared the trees on that December of 17, put the box covered in two days later, and due to weather and the time of year it was, we waited until April to do the stream relocation. We relocated the stream 40 foot to the side of Wilson Road in three weeks in, April into May of 18. And we had to wait for the box cord to be installed, so the water company moved the water line, which was July 18. The Song Basin, another one that had to be phased in, we went and cleaned the area up during some downtime that we had, but we started that basin April 12 of 18. That's another one that the city built themselves. A lot of dirt, all the dirt in the field that came, that was required to put that dam and stuff in came from the Alternate Basin, you know, the way the contract was set, and that way, you know, there wasn't enough spoiled dirt on the site to build that. So, we completed that November 1st of 2018. The Centennial Road Extension seemed like it took forever. Philip Brothers had a lot of delays on the Dixie Highway side because of weather and rain and state requirements and such, which kind of dictated the city's portion of tying it in. We couldn't pave ours till they pretty much had theirs paved. But we started that simultaneously, along with the Song Basin, Alternate Basin, and the Wilson Road reconstruction of May 25th of 2018, and completed it November 1st of 18.
Now, that, the reason why that hadn't opened, of course, and then share that with them, because I know there's a lot of people asking why.
Yeah.
That's what I was just going to ask.
The, obviously, obviously, we didn't want to pave ours till they were, till the state highway portion was done. The loops were put in, we couldn't open the road up without the signal installed. By the time that contract was completed and the signal was installed, and the loops installed, I think it was about a week before Christmas of last year, before they got the pavement on, and at that time, it's not, they were fortunate to get the state highway part done, they got enough days, 40 or above, to pave it, which was two days, they were able to get two days, 40 or above. Immediately after getting that road done, the Scottys shut their plant down due to weather and cold. It's not a good time to pave. It's better for you to pave when it's 60 or above.
Yeah, that's basis sound, man.
Yeah, they'll do it, they'll do it 40 or above, and when they, when they have to, like in a 31W situation. So at that point, in order to get it open, it would have took about $6,000 to $7,000 with the temporary striping to put the turn lanes and turn arrows there, which would have been, you know, obviously wasted money in the spring, really, we didn't have the paving weather to do it anyway, so the decision was made just to keep it closed till the spring. We do have other issues. The Hardin County Water District is going to lay a new sewer line, basically cutting through our walking path that we have down for Turner Lane. I've been discussing with the mayor whether we want to pave this in April when the plant opens up, or wait for them to get the project done, and at this time, I think we're leaning to maybe wait until they get their portion done.
Excuse me, cutting through the walking path, where?
Right in front of the Turner Lane Basin. Basically, they're going to tie into the sewer where it crosses Wilson Road that comes in behind Shelton Road to the sewer line.
There's a lift station right there, off to the.
Why are we going to have to repay that?
Well, we're not going to repay, but we, we don't have our final surface on yet.
We don't have it down through there where Kelly and them live. You know, that's all rough still.
And we don't have the final surface on the walking path yet, so they, if we wait till they get done, when we get done, our project's still going to look brand new. If we pave it now and they come in and do theirs.
They're going to cut the road out.
It's, it's like we're going to have a brand new thing, but it's going to be patched. And that's why we've held off, none of these basins have the final surface on it yet, there's several reasons for that. The most important reason is when we get done, it's kind of like painting your house, we want it, we want it all to look new when we're, when we're totally complete, and so, we'll pave all the walking paths at the very end. This sewer project that we're talking about is, hopefully, will resolve a lot of the sewer overflows that we, you know, that we've got a lot of phone calls on, because several of those manholes overflow on our walking paths, you know, and the toilet paper and debris ends up on it, so. This is an attempt by them to try to resolve some of those.
Were they unaware of that while we were building the road? I mean, the.
I was, I think they were unaware of the, I approached them about trying to get sewers for those three houses, because those three houses never had sewers before. I think that their hope was that redone the pump station, which they were doing simultaneous to, they got three projects down there theirself. They put in a forest main, when we were, two years ago, they put in a lift station last year, a brand new pump station, and now they're laying a new forest main along Dixie, or along 31W, basically, up through Blackjack, all the way past Mill Creek. All that is an attempt to get more of the sewage out of the Happy Valley watershed from that, you know, all that's going to make the, that pump station pump more, and hopefully lower the sewer level.
That's the Wilson Road project going all the way around, comes out behind the apartments, Old Smith Apartments, all that's part of it.
Right, I've seen that work going on there.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be another summer full of construction.
Yeah, and then the other thing, this is a side note, East Lincoln Trail's falling in that same boat, we have it on the schedule to blacktop, but because they're right in the middle of cutting all that and everything, we're going to have to redo it all again. We're, we're trying to semi, semi, say it for me.
Simultaneously.
Simultaneously, there you go. Coordinate with them so we can do it all at once, so we're not having to have them cut out any fresh blacktop.
Yeah.
But when they cut out our blacktop, they're supposed to restore it back to its condition, right?
Yeah, but you always.
Because that doesn't seem to be happening ever.
Yeah, you always have that cut, no matter what.
No matter how good of a job they do it, a patch is a patch, you know, and.
Right, so what do we do to fix that? Because you can drive all through town, and, I mean, it's as rough as can be because of all, I mean, it seems like everywhere you drive has a patch somewhere on it.
Yeah, that's the issue. Yeah, that's an issue that we probably need to bring up at, at a different time, you know, a different topic as far as standards and stuff like that. We can bring, we can address at a different time, but definitely probably worth looking at or discussing.
Yeah, I know, uh, and I think on these two instances, we know that they're getting ready to cut surface out. And so, we'd rather wait until that.
Well, I agree with that.
Come back, so.
So, I, uh, they've ensured me, uh, Daniel, who works for the Water District, that they would be done by June. Uh, you know, and because I, I told them we'd like to get it done in this budget year. It's gonna be April before you know it. So, the alternate basin is our last basin, uh, still looks, you know, definitely still looks like it's in construction. We've moved the party by sixty percent of the, the spoiled dirt from that area. Couple of months more worth of, of site work to move the dirt and then we laid a forty-eight inch pipe. Expect it to be completed or has to be completed by October two thousand nineteen, should, should not be any problem.
Oh, I missed the start date, you were too fast.
Yeah, we started that at the same time we started, basically when we needed field dirt for the Wilson Road, uh, when we raised Wilson Road and finished Centennial up. When we got the grant for the walking trail, we had to widen Centennial, the connector that went across. So, some of that dirt went down to Centennial to widen that, to put the eight-foot walking path across there. And a lot of that dirt was hauled up to the Song Basin. That's when we, when, when we started that basin there. The budget, the grant amount, like I said, once we done the budget revision and got that approved by FEMA, the, the final grant amount was five million ninety-four, ninety-four thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars. To this point, FEMA has reimbursed us four million five hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and two dollars, basically, with remaining funds of five hundred and forty-nine and some, and some change.
Everybody got that?
I'm gonna get a copy of it if you'll.
And that's the, that's it on the FEMA basins.
How are we doing on a grant for the tunnel going underneath thirty-one W?
The last email I had on the tunnel was, um, middle of last week or end of last week, might've been last Friday. They said they was gonna inform whoever the lucky candidates were that were approved last Monday. My contact down at the district fore down here in E-Town said he was expecting to hear something by the end. He hasn't heard. I'm holding off on submitting the next grant cycle, which has to be submitted by April third for the next cap grant cycle until we hear, hopefully they'll, they'll decide this week. And then the mayor can inform me whether we've been approved or not. And we held off, that's part of the thirty-one W. They expected something about the budget crisis or, or up in Frankfurt. They, uh, we held out as long as we could on thirty-one W and on the hopes that if the tunnel went in, that we could put it in before the final surface was installed on thirty-one W. And that kinda put thirty-one W back a little bit. But hopefully we'll hear something in the next week or two, which will throw another wrench into the budget. Because it's another unbudgeted.
Is there any chance we can get the exercise equipment we discussed? There any, remember the exercise equipment in, in different various places on the walking trail?
Oh, yeah, it would be, yeah, I think, you know, we'd look for another grant to do that, Mr. Thompson, if it comes through, you know, as far as the workout, they'll go along in conjunction with the walking trails and.
Oh, we're talking about like, like you could stop and do push-ups, sit-ups and pull-ups and stuff.
For the RTP, we got some bike racks. We got two bike racks, a couple of benches, uh, some trash cans and they paid for some, for you to put your dog, your dog, waste, dog receptacle. We got a couple of those, uh, in that grant. Now, whether people will use them or not, you know, but it's, it's grant, it was reimbursable stuff through the RTP grant. And we did, we did submit and get a couple of those.
When will the sluice gates be installed?
All but one of the gates have been installed in our operational, yeah. And all the, all the, uh, meter bases have been installed.
Are they still manual right now?
They're manual. We've had, you know, but we do it every day that we have a chance to do it, you know.
So, you can't do it from your phone yet?
No, I can't do it from my phone. It'd be nice, I would've done, I would've be checking.
But you're gonna be able to, right?
When's that gonna be ready?
Uh, it, you know, basically it's all construction related as far as time-wise, you know. Limit the manpower we got, we do it every time we have a couple of days. The guy that we did have working on it, he's working on other stuff now. But we got the priority, we got the gates in, we can hand crank them. We're gonna do a, um, a touch base with the basin control people next week. They're gonna come down on Monday and go, you know, go over what we've already got installed and start making plans on getting it hooked up into the office and on, on the software. We've already got the software, they just haven't installed it on the network and stuff.
Mr. Spalding, so as I was writing here, what I came up with, now correct me if I've missed something. The only things we have left to do there is the final payment on the, um, Centennial extension of the road, right?
Centennial and Wilson.
Mm-hmm, that extension. The final pavement for the access roads to go around the, um.
For every basin, for every basin, yeah.
And then the alternate basin, which will be done in October.
Yes.
That's the only things we have left to do out there?
Well, the remaining, remaining gate work, you know, and software installation and stuff.
Okay, so we've still got gate work.
Some wiring for that too, right?
Yeah. Most of the conduit, almost, uh, almost all the conduit been in, installed.
What are we gonna do about cutting them basins?
Last year, we didn't have any, I mean, we, we mowed Turner and Wilson last year. The, our mowing crew was able, I think we mowed it a total of maybe four times. It's, it kept it pretty, I think they mowed the bottoms of them twice, the sides, the mowers had no trouble getting on. And, you know, with the, uh, with the Harden County detention help that we had, we didn't really have any trouble keeping up with it. But it's, we really didn't have to mow Quiggin's. We mowed it, a couple stripped down on the other side. Now, when it comes, I think it'll have to be mowed at probably at most at one, we'll have to see how it goes. It's, it, the water stays in it longer, so the grass doesn't grow as fast per se. It might be so-called a little bit uglier because it just holds so much water during the year.
Which one was that?
The Quiggin's Basin. During a dry year, it's gonna look good. I think we got a good picture of it when it's dry, but this time, you know, seventy-five inches we had last year, it is, it, it was doing its job.
Yeah, I anticipate we'll have a, a pretty good schedule, so I'm gonna make sure it looks good. They, uh.
Me too.
Uh, the other thing, uh, Councilwoman Baker is Toby and I talked about is just the, uh, getting the rest of, because it's been so muddy, you can't do anything, but as we, the next few weeks, we're gonna start restoring all that dirt and everything around there where everything's seeded and then, uh, there's some places.
Okay, so they're not completed?
Well, no, there's some places that has to be re-mitigated because the, there's growth, there's dirt. They wanna smooth it all out and get it back looking the way that I think it needs to look.
Okay, so we're still gonna be doing work out there, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they were out there doing, um, well, no, the basins are finished, but some of the work where they did, um, they were hardly raking about two weeks ago when it was a little bit dry, stuff like that. And the re-sowing the grass where it didn't take or.
Okay, so we still have the landscaping to do.
There's still some stuff like that, they got cleaned up. Toby may think it's done, but I'd like to see it a little prettier.
Couple of those common areas, uh, one of them that, uh, the mayor's talking about is there in front of US Calvary. That was used as a spoil site for, for the thirty-one W work. And also they used a lot over by the pump station as a, as a field site and spoil site for their materials and equipment. Obviously, they didn't get off there till December, around Christmas time. And they was working there the first of this year. So, uh, we've already restored the one in front of the, uh, US Cal. We haven't got across to the other side of the road. About a day or two of dry weather, we'll have it restored.
Yeah. Eighty-one roofing.
Now, we still gotta put a lot over US Cav, right?
Still had to pay that, yes.
All right, anybody got, anything else? All right, thank you, Toby.
Thank you.
Murray, you wanna come up?
If you got a hard copy of this PowerPoint?
I don't have one.
We can, we can print one, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
How are y'all doing?
Murray, um, just like, uh, Jeremy, uh, as we're talking about budget, just wanna clarify the old, you know, Murray is the planning director, uh, for the city. The way that I split that department up is making Jeremy over the building side, Murray's over the planning side. So, both of them are now directors over their respective departments, so. Murray, director.
Okay, I've got three items for you all tonight. The first one that's listed is a zoning ordinance amendment. And what's being proposed is amending the zoning ordinance and development regulations, Article Two definitions, Article Ten conditional use standards and Article Twenty-four commercial zone standards. And what the city's proposing to do is to amend some of the definitions and also conditional uses versus being permitted uses. What we're looking at is amending the definition of a boarding, lodging and group home, which is currently defined as a building where for compensation and by pre-arrangement for definite periods, meals or lodging or both are provided for s, less than six persons, not including members of the keeper's immediate family. The reason for that is we've actually been inundated with applications for group homes. And in some cases, we were getting applications where it far exceeded six persons, uh, or less than six persons. It was six and beyond. And we were having some difficulties as well. We also looked at our definitions in the zoning ordinance of a single family, which I'm going to reference here. Single family is defined very close to a group home in terms of being any number of persons immediately related by blood, marriage or adoption. Then it can also be a situation of five or fewer persons, not necessarily related by blood, marriage or adoption. Says doesn't include a boarding house, rooming house, club lodge, fraternity or sorority house. But the fact of the matter is we're running into some issues with those definitions being very close in nature. And currently, boarding houses are permitted uses in the RH, R-two, R-three, R-four, R-five, R-six and residential PUD zones. And there are also conditional uses in the commercial and commercial holding zones. If you look, um, what we're proposing to do is actually similar to what the city of Elizabeth Town is doing and also on par with what Harden County has in their regulations. And, uh, especially really closely related to what the city of Elizabeth Town has. And what we've got is define, redefining a boarding house or group home as a building or part thereof other than a hotel or motel where lodging or meals or both are provided with or without compensation for six or more persons. So, it's kinda looking at it as an occupancy thing. If a single family is five or less persons that could be unrelated, the current definition of group home almost mirrors that. And we thought that a group quarters, just like Elizabeth Town, they call theirs a community residence, but it's a similar definition in terms of six or more unrelated individuals. And, uh, we wanted to change that. And then the other thing, we wanted to add a definition for a halfway house, which the city of Elizabeth Town has in their ordinance. And it's, uh, referencing a licensed or unlicensed facility for persons on release from more restrictive custodial confinement or initially placed in lieu of such more restrictive custodial confinement, where in supervision, rehabilitation and counseling are provided to mainstream residents back into society, enabling them to live independently. And essentially, that would probably pertain to court-ordered halfway houses for the most part. People that are court-ordered into that situation.
Quick question. How many are allowed in a halfway house now?
Um, we don't even really have a definition of a halfway house in our zoning ordinance. It's undefined. So, technically, it would be a form of a group home, which would be five or less. So, this definition, by adding it, uh, a definition of a halfway house in, we also had the same structure as what Elizabeth Town's proposing in terms of putting that in a commercial zone only.
And how many would they allow in a commercial zone?
Uh, there's really not a number, uh, that's listed here at all. And we use the same definition that they're using. And also, those definitions closely mirror what's in the American Planning Association. They've got a definitions handbook and they take definitions from different cities across the country and they'll list several different definitions. Uh, that handbook that I referenced actually contains both those definitions.
Model definitions?
Yes. There's probably about five different versions you could utilize of every definition for every land use known to man. But we used the ones that seemed to fit our current zoning ordinance and also match up with what Elizabeth Town was using. It just kinda made the most sense. But, uh, what we had is to place those uses instead of as conditional uses in residential and commercial zones, to have them as permitted uses in commercial zones only. And then it would still be that a single family would be looked at as five or less unrelated individuals or five individuals related by blood, marriage or adoption. Or any number of individuals related by blood, marriage or adoption. There's no limit on the numbers there. But if they're unrelated, it's five or less, that would still be deemed a single family. So, really, more than anything, it was cleaning up the language to clear out any gray areas and then also to move the placement to certain homes that if you had, say, a group home, it's, it would be redefined as six or more. And based off that kinda occupancy, we probably wouldn't want it in the neighborhood. It could cause some disruption.
Yeah, let me jump into, uh, Mr. Pike. You've actually looked at this for other communities as well, not just ours that you've dealt with. And so, um, there was a couple of times where we had this, um, back before, while we were here, till about ten-thirty at night, listening to public comments, I believe it was.
We had a few board of adjustment meetings that were very lengthy and involved. And unfortunately, there are homes, um, that are being used and, and primarily the tenants are former substance abusers, um, maybe people with alcohol issues. And we've, we've heard this term group home thrown around. Quite often, these homes are, they're not licensed, they're not run by licensed individuals. There's no government oversight whatsoever. People are paying monthly rent.
For whatever.
For part of a bedroom. You may have a, a, you know, ten by twelve bedroom with four bunk beds in it and the person is paying six or seven hundred dollars a month and they get one bed.
Yeah.
You know, they're, they're not even getting, you know, the house, they're getting part of a bedroom in the house. So, we need to clean up, as Murray said.
Yeah, and we ran into it with our fire chief, our building official, uh, where we've been into homes where there's thirteen or fourteen people living.
Probably right across the street from me, right? We have fifteen there.
I won't point them out, sir, but. Yeah, so.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, is there any square footage requirements that people have to be allowed to have? I know in jail there are. And do you have to have so many bedrooms? Does that, um, say how many can be occupied? Cause I know if you don't have a, a window and a, a door or a closet, sort of, you have to have a closet in order for it to be considered a bedroom. And I think it also, Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, also has to have two inch, two ways out, right? A window and a door. So, with those kind of regulations being out there, I would think that there's some kind of a regulation that says how many people are allowed to have square footage or how many people are allowed, unrelated people.
Under the building code.
For one, under the building code. So, maybe if we check into that some.
We have, we, and we have looked at those, we've called the state. And there, there are, and we don't wanna take away from the legal ones or the ones that are trying, you know, we're not saying anybody's not doing what they should be doing. And s, several of these circumstances, uh, we've seen of where people are, and, uh, Mr. Pike can attest to this, are doing these in multiple different jurisdiction areas. And, um, one of them, I think in one city you're in withdrew their, their, their license, I guess, or what it was that they were looking for, their motion. or what it was that they were looking for, their motion, because they were, they couldn't answer the questions that was being asked of them. And we called the state, the state doesn't recognize these. And so we noticed that what we're trying to do is come in more compliance with Elizabethtown, the county, where all of us are almost on the same page. That way, we're all on the same structure.
But Barbara, to your point, building code, fire code, sprinkler requirements, those are all laid out in building and fire codes.
Yeah.
So if there's a group home with 15 people and so much room, they're going to have to have sprinklers and.
And if they met those, then it would be.
Ingress, egress, yes.
Okay, so we are looking at those other regulations.
Those regulations are already in place.
Yeah. But nine times out of 10, you won't get a, a person that's, and some of these that we ran into.
And this is just the ones, granted, that are coming to us for it, not the ones that are just putting them in there, we don't know.
Usually it's recorded, where you have like 10 cars outside the house, or sometimes it's five cars, multiple garbage cans. And then some of these cases are, people are subleasing homes from other people, and then renting them out to these other folks. And then when our building officials and stuff went in and told them they have to do X, Y, and Z to meet the requirements, what Mr. Pike was talking about, you know, they don't want to put a sprinkler system in a residential home to make, break, to bring it up to.
Okay, but we are looking at that, that's, just trying to make sure.
They don't want to jackhammer, but I don't want, I want them to understand where we were coming from with this, that it wasn't just something we picked up one day and said we're going to change this.
I think one of the big things is that a lot of these places where they're locating are single-family detached homes. And if you look at different land uses, a group home or boarding house is not defined or should not be as the same as a single family, because it's generally a case where you may have an over occupancy issue. And that's what we've been running into, that these are being done in such a fashion that you've got perhaps 15 people living in a single-family detached home, and it's obviously, at that point, not a single family anymore.
Right.
But one result also of these regulations, if they are enacted, is, let's say you have a quote-unquote "group home" that has five tenants in it, they're unlicensed, they're unregulated, you know, there's no medical supervision, et cetera, et cetera. And then imagine a, a single-family home that's being rented to five college students, unrelated. There's no difference legally, zero difference. And there shouldn't be. You know, why, why should there be? The fact that these people have a medical history and these people may not, you know, that's not a basis to distinguish between the two for regulatory purposes, but, but once you start having large numbers, then it's a different issue, so.
Just for the record, the guys that live across from me never had a problem with them, ever. Very respectful, so far. It's been a couple years.
Good, Murray? Any questions?
That was all I had on that one.
Okay.
Planning Commission approved it, by the way, for recommendation, so.
Next, Trey.
Okay, the second item that I had to bring before you tonight was, it was a, well, let me actually reverse those two, let me do the annexation ordinance first here. So Robert Mullet has sent in a request or waiver of right to remonstrate form that basically says they will not contest the annexation, because legally, within 60 days after an annexation ordinance is passed, the applicant can contest it. So we have them sign a form saying they won't contest it, basically giving up their rights that, hey, if you request to be annexed, you're not going to dispute it later.
It's a consent to be annexed, they, they want to be brought into the city.
Yeah, so that kind of initiates the whole annexation proceedings, but this property is actually located on Battle Turning Road, and it's between, as the packet describes, between southbound road intersection and Blair Hill Lane. And that's just a little bit past the Dixie 434 intersection, if you head eastbound on 434. And the property's current, well, the current size of the property is 25.414 acres. And they're proposing for that to be brought into the city. There is an attached draft annexation ordinance that we put together based off the annexation plat and the legal description. So that's located with your packet.
What we'll be reading is going, going to be shorter, and I'll have to prepare that. But we won't read the entire description like that, otherwise it'd be your own.
Yeah, basically.
It's a long one, isn't it?
It's a long one, yes, ma'am.
We just copied Turner Engineering's legal directly up there to avoid any kind of confusion, because the Secretary of State has told us they have to match. So as Mike said, he may condense that version.
For, for publication and reading purposes.
Any questions on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to have a copy of the transcript for the public hearings?
We are preparing that. It's still being prepared right now. I know that we're working on it this afternoon, so as soon as that's available, we'll get that to you.
Okay. And then, now my question is, I was having a hard time seeing this.
Okay.
I mean, I tried really hard, but where exactly, if you can tell, where exactly do they adjoin Radcliffe now? Is it from the entrance? Because I don't think it's from the entrance, but I'm not sure.
Well, no. It's actually on the northern portion of the property. Yeah, at the top of your map there.
The whole back side? I'm sorry, I was just trying to figure it out, and I, directionally challenged, I guess.
This is the common with property, it said existing city of Radcliffe.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Now, that's hard, unincorporated Harden County there.
This is Harden County.
And then this here is Auburn Hills.
So all of this? And then this? And then this is county?
Across the street, there's the Cape Creek Estates, but, yeah, these properties are actually R2 in Radcliffe.
Across the streets in Radcliffe?
Yes.
Okay, but just those houses that show in here, these lots on south boundary, or not?
Those houses also along 434 are not. That Springwood subdivision, that row of lots there, don't believe those are built on. But the house, it'd be on your left there, the Michael Ray property, that's built on, and that's in the county.
That one's in the county?
Yeah, but if you look east of that entry, entrance there, all those lots, 6 through 14, don't believe they're built on those lots. I think they're undeveloped, but those are county.
County. But across the street from that access is Radcliffe, right?
Yeah, Cape Creek Estates is right across the street there.
Okay, because that was my concern is, you know, I know it abuts it on the back and the one side, but you know, we have those issues with, is it Amy, Amy Avenue being all around Radcliffe but not in Radcliffe, and?
They don't want to annex them.
Well, I know, but as far as when they want their lumps picked up, then they start calling, sometimes, the new people. So I was just trying to see how that played.
Yeah, by law, they're required to show the point at which it's contiguous to the city boundary. So in this case, it's much more than a single point, you know? Has to be at least a single point, but there's, you know, large portions of the property that are directly adjacent to the city boundary. And it's marked on this map, I know it's hard to read, but it is on there.
Yeah, it is, I can't, I couldn't see it, the slidey must be better than where I was.
So I guess to make a long story short, it does meet the statutory requirement for the Secretary of State to accept it.
Right. That was my only question.
All right, and I've got one more for you. In conjunction with that annexation ordinance, Green River Stairs LLC has submitted a zone map amendment application to rezone the property from Harden County R3 to an R1 zone. And I've given the surrounding zoning classifications, a copy of the zoning ordinance as well. I guess on a side note, there's really not a whole lot to say there, other than the request was supported by the Conference of Plan, and the Planning Commission approved, or recommended approval of that to the council. But one thing I did kind of want to bring up a side note, was that we do need to get some of the paperwork cleaned up on both the waiver of right to remonstrate and the zone map application before the council meeting next Tuesday. They submitted under Green River Stairs LLC.
I was just getting ready to ask you.
But what happened is, the deed did not process and get recorded before the application was submitted. When the deed finally got through, and there were some issues with that, it had four individual property owners, two sets of husbands and wives. So I made the applicant aware of it, and he needs to have all four owners listed under the applicant name, and then all four signatures under the signature portion of both applications. And I made him aware of it at the end of the Planning Commission meeting, he was working on obtaining those signatures. And then I emailed him today and talked to his engineer on the phone, and just let him know that by next Tuesday, we have to have those documents in order, because they are legal documents.
And if for some reason, they don't get them to us, then we'll just not put it in front of you guys until they get them signed. It's just technical flaws.
Did you say Thursday or Tuesday you told?
Tuesday.
Okay, I thought you said Thursday.
That was going to be my question, because we have the names over here and then the business over here.
Yeah, what happened is.
But you're going to have it where both of them are under all the names?
Yeah, he thought that the deed was going to be recorded under that LLC, and then, for whatever reason, they ended up recording it under the individuals' names. So that's why there was a discrepancy, but the other issue is that Robert Mullet signed as a member of that LLC, but once it changed to four individuals, it required all their signatures.
Basically, the two partners and their wives is what it is.
Right. So with us having the zone changed, it won't matter what it says, because once it's changed, it's changed. It's not going to hinder their development or anything, as far as what name it's under, goes by the deed, right?
It'll go by the deed, yeah.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure I was right.
Anybody else? All right, we'll have everything ready, and if it's not ready, then we can have all the.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Murray.
Thanks.
All right, the four, number four, five, this is something we had discussed a little bit at the last meeting, but didn't move forward with anything, and so we kind of brought it back up, and I talked to Mr. Pike, Article One. If you all remember, we talked about the penalty portion of that. And then, so I didn't know how you all wanted to approach this, because Article One, and then, let's see, Jeff, on the second one, this is.
The wording's basically the same with 8/6 and 8/19, either combine them.
Right.
Make one, my suggestion is make 8/6 reserved, and then move everything, and then 8/6 into 19, just have it container slash litter receptacles.
That way, you don't have to do.
But do it all again, just make.
Just add that little bit there for that one.
But 8/19, make 8/19 the bulk of it.
So it's just really, they didn't have to have a.
So make it to all Section 19?
Basically, take 8/6 and strip it and reserve it, and put the bulk of that into 8/19, and then?
Change 36th and 90th.
Yes, 36 is too small.
Right, the gallons and all that. However, the last couple of days, I've noticed that my trash can seems awful tall. I have to really swing that bag to get it. Can we get a little shorter cans, it'd be nice. I guess I haven't worn my boots, and I'm a little shorter.
Need a little step ladder.
Now, the other question was the penalty side, and Councilman Palmer, he had talked to me this morning about it. And I think, Mr. Pike, if I remember, you explained to him.
I talked about maybe separating out, that for egregious offenses, maybe the threat of jail is appropriate, but for minor offenses, a fine is more than adequate. But sorting all that out, I haven't, honestly, I haven't sorted it all out. If, and if we just want to remove jail totally and see how it goes, and if there's a problem in the future, then we can do that. You know, usually, if we have property where there's trash and it's a real problem, often it's not occupied.
Right.
So maybe the answer is to remove the jail penalty from that particular ordinance, and just leave fines in place.
I like the fine idea, a lot better.
Just do the fines?
Yeah.
What do y'all think?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, if they don't pay the fines, you can get them in jail.
Well, but then, if we have to clean it up.
We don't want to clean Radcliffe up, I'm tired of it.
If it's that big of a problem, we're going to be doing other things too, with the leans.
Okay, since this came out of Article Two, do you want to straighten that up as well?
And that's why.
This is actually word for word out of Article Two.
Right.
So if you want to take that out, amend that one, and then add it in to 8.3.
Yeah, I know, it needs, yeah.
And Mr. England and I was talking right before the meeting, the way we have the Article One, it doesn't have a penalty. And then the penalties at the end of Article Two, Article Two is really talking about the franchise agreement, and how that does, which to me would be two totally different sets of penalties.
Yeah, so that needs to be, that needs to be revised, and we had talked about that too.
So I think it was, was it 23, Jeff?
23 would be the new one.
Would be, if we make it 23 under Article One.
Article One, 8.3.
Then put the penalties on 23.
You would still have to tweak Article Two penalty, the, of the jails, unless you want to leave that in there.
Right.
I mean, I have to agree with what Mr. Pike said the last time, though, it's, there has to be some extraordinary circumstances for county attorney and judge and everything else to.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, at that point, we're going to be there anyway, probably picking it up ourselves, and we can put leans on the property like mowing the grass. If they're not doing that, their chances are they're not mowing the grass, or they may already be there, that's why they can't pick up that stuff.
I don't know why, I mean, I guess Terry Bennett or Don Skeeter's going to put that in, but it would have been before then.
I have no idea, I don't know. But I, I do know in my experience that the county attorney and the district judges have not been terribly favorable about jail penalties for violation of city ordinances.
Well, especially with the overcrowding situation that we've got going on now.
And it's, and they've been that way for years, though, so, I, I get it, I mean, and it is a resources issue, so. Okay, well, if the consensus is remove the jail penalty and make these penalties comparable across the board, then we'll do that.
I don't know.
Does that sound good, everybody?
Well. Where the jail penalty is right now, is for the franchise. I mean, we're not going to take our franchise group and threaten them with jail, surely not, if they pick up trash too early.
No, but I also think, if I'm not mistaken, those penalties talk about if you're not taking trash service.
If you're not taking what?
Oh.
If you're not taking trash service, if you're refusing to.
You pile it up in your backyard.
Yeah. Or if you burn it, or if you, you know, haul it in a truck somewhere else, or, you know.
There's just some people out there that's defiant, they're not, you know, they're not going to clean it up, they're not going to pay their fines. You throw, you throw them in jail for one day, all of a sudden, it gets cleaned up, and you get your fines. Some, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an extreme circumstance, too, I mean, you know, but, and I understand the jail, and, but.
Well, and I think I alluded to this last time, is that the, the process of sorting through that, what, what do we want to jail people for?
Right.
To me, I think that's a lengthier discussion we need to have. I, I don't really feel comfortable going through and deciding on my own as city attorney, what people need to be jailed for. That's, that's a legislative function for you folks to decide.
And you got to think about, too, if you got somebody that's renting, you put a lien on a property, you put a lien on a landlord's property, not the person that's.
on a property, you put a lean on a landlord's property, not the person that's causing the issue, so we gotta, you know, maybe discuss that, too.
Yes, because at some point, you know, the buck has to stop somewhere, and, uh, certainly landlords, uh, have some measure of control, uh, in that situation, but I, I certainly understand the point.
I mean, I, I don't know of any case we've ever done it, so I really, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if it needs to be in there or not, I just, like, the idea of being able to do it and get them to clean their stuff up, I received three phone calls today alone about junk, you know?
I mean, I, I get that, we, we do get the calls about junk, I don't know, jail.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we'd ever go to that extreme, we can take it out and see how it goes, and I don't know that we would ever lock anybody up, anyway.
Well, Ms. Baker had asked about maybe talking about it next month, and I, I think that's a good idea, to where we actually can give it a little thought, and, uh, perhaps Mr. Palmer can come back next time, he actually had already the issue, but, you know.
It's just more for me, just so people know we're serious, we want you to clean your stuff up, keep it clean.
Understood, understood.
I'm not, this is just my opinion, just as a, a human being and a lawyer, um, which those are not mutually exclusive.
So, that's two different people there.
But, uh, you know, somebody who won't take trash service, and who won't pay their bill, and who is sneaky about it, uh, they don't care about jail either, to be honest. I mean, that's just my take on it, and I'm not saying take it out, but, they, they don't care.
Yeah, I, I think it's an empty threat, personally.
I, I do as well, but, you know, you can leave it in there, and, and, or make that just for certain offenses that, you know, that we really wanna send a message on, you know, and then leave the rest as fines for penalty.
Do we have that under the lawn mowing, the grass cutting, do you know, Chief Henderson? Jail time?
Nah, I don't think that's necessarily fines in a big sense.
Just fines, so this is the same thing?
So, if we don't go for that, we shouldn't do it.
No, we shouldn't do that. That's what I'm saying, it's kinda the same thing.
It's, and the, you know, the, the thing about, I mean, it can, they're both kinds of nuisances, but, uh-
And we prob-, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just thought, we probably wanna make sure, kinda mirror image those, cause to me, they're about the same
Yeah, I, I would say letting garbage pile up is way more of a health issue than tall grass, although tall grass can be, uh, certainly not just an aesthetic issue, but it, it certainly can be a health issue, if you got rats and noxious vegetation and that kinda stuff, but, you know, dirty nasty trash out on the, you know.
Right.
That's, that's why people get phone calls, right?
Yeah, we're gonna go clean it up, and just get it, so we don't, to eliminate the phone calls.
And I'm not gonna speak for the police department, but, you know, enforcing somebody on, you know, six bags of trash, you know, I, I don't know, I, I think when resources are stretched thin, I, I think police officers might, I mean, police officers don't wanna do code enforcement, um-
But y'all do city ordinance, don't you do?
Mm-hmm.
Do force city ordinance.
That's not the right answer.
Wrong answer, Jeff.
Well, I, I think another way, leave it to- Leave it to the city attorney to say that the, the police department cannot be actively seeking to be harsh and enforce every city ordinance on the book, you, you would have an upset city population, you'd have upset council members, and upset mayor.
And we wouldn't have enough police.
Yeah, so that's, that's my-
Or enough budget.
Just take it out. Can we, uh, can I have, Mr. Pike, then, do you just write something up for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Put it in an ordinance form, so they can actually see it, and know what it looks like, and then?
Yeah, I can, I can get it, so they can look at it, but then maybe we'll vote on and talk about it somewhere next month, maybe.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, okay. That way they have something to-
That way you have it for next week, but then, but then we won't vote till April, you won't vote till April, right?
Okay.
All right, the next-
That's cleaned up month, anyway.
Right.
It is.
Yes.
All right, Chief, you gonna come up on this?
All right. How's everybody?
Great, good.
Good, doing good. All right, so we put the bids back out, and, uh, actually had several people that, that had actually come in and actually looked at all the systems, but still, only two bids came in. Uh, one was the same as, uh, some, one of the same companies that put in for it last time, and then we had a, a different company for the second bid, so, uh, after looking at them, I believe we went with Corson. Corson was the one that was the lowest bid, um, Corson is a good company, uh, Browns was the other one, uh, Browns is a good company also, so, um, but, lowest bid-wise, it would be Corson's. So, if you guys got any questions?
Is that your recommendation?
That would be my recommendation, yes.
As I said, on this, we don't have a, a recommendation.
Okay, I apologize.
That's all right. Then you're familiar with both?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah, I've seen the Corsons.
Corson's been around for a long time.
Yeah, yeah, Corson's been around for a long time, Browns has been around for, they're both good folks, I mean, the people are real, real professional on both companies, but obviously, we gotta go with whoever's the lowest on this, I mean, I think they both do, do good service, so.
Well, it's the lowest and the best, so.
Yeah, there you go.
So, we can put Corson on the agenda for Tuesday.
Night for a vote. Good?
Think so?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I gotta teach these other guys how to do this. All right, uh, with that being said, does anybody have anything? Chris, I started with you last time.
Uh, I didn't bring anything, we have the city spring fling, but I don't have my paper, so I really can't tell you much about it. It's in April.
It's on the agenda for next week.
We have Radcliffe Small Business Alliance luncheon is tomorrow at noon at Calvin Community Center.
And you, I think our chief is one of the speakers back there tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes, it's, uh, Law and Order is the theme tomorrow.
Law and Order.
Law and Order, can't wait to hear what he has to say.
Uh, this is what we like to call Celebration Week, because, yes, we do have RSBA tomorrow, uh, Wednesday, we also have the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, Jay Wickhord, he is a phenomenal motivational speaker, he will be, um, the guest speaker on Wednesday, inviting everybody to come out. Both organizations, if you don't have to be a member to come, but at least show up and, um, get to know people around you, but I, I highly recommend everybody to, you know, come out to the Law and Order, I think it's gonna be amazing, and it also brings the gap down, as we're trying to get more of our citizens involved with learning what law enforcement is, and then also get a chance to network with the business community. So, uh, congratulations again to Tuscany, I did not get a chance to make it to your ribbon cutting, I was at work, but I heard it was phenomenal, and I will get over there and taste some good pasta once I'm over with my diet, that's all I got.
All right.
I'm just happy to see the spring coming, and, you know, we moved the clocks forward, cause I love the daylight, I like to be able to barbecue in the evening, and I hope everybody is enjoying it. Well, April, like we said, next month's, uh, spring cleanup, there's a lot of yards out there that needs to be cleaned up, so get your trash to the curb, we'll come and pick it up, and if you don't, our code enforcement will have to, they give you a fine, and if you wanna live like you live in the county, move to the county. That's all I gotta say.
It means that with all the love and-
I'm gonna end on a happy note with you, Chris.
Hey, you know, I get calls every day about people and their junk, and it depreciates the people's homes' values next to it, and as, I'm obligated to protect those, uh, we all are, to protect them homeowners' values and their property, so, clean your stuff up, or we're gonna come knocking on your door.
Hate to follow behind that, right? Uh, just a reminder, uh, we also wanted to congratulate, um, the ladies of Zeta Phi Beta and the ladies of, uh, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, um, we were able to support them at both events on Saturday and Sunday for their scholarships, the debutante, the debutante cotillion was actually yesterday, it was amazing, congratulations again to the winner, she was absolutely beautiful, but it was gorgeous to see them yesterday, and also, congratulations again to Zeta Phi Beta for their scholarship fundraiser, their fourth year.
And you made it out for us?
For both of them.
For both, thank you, represented all of us, thank you so much.
Gotcha.
Are you gonna say about John Harden, while we're into all of this?
Oh, we can, uh, but I was gonna say for the next meeting.
Well, we can say it both times.
I'll let you say it, since you wanna say something.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Go ahead, Barbara.
I'd just like to congratulate the basketball players at John Harden and that school for all the hard work and everything they've put in to have an undefeated season, make it to the state tournament, unfortunately, by one point, I guess two points, and one would have tied it, uh, they didn't come out to the good, but, uh, it's a great run.
Coach called a timeout, too soon, man. Merle hit that shot, and he called a timeout.
Uh, last thing before we close, I just wanted to, uh, today I had the opportunity to go over to the, uh, uh, Nursing Center, the Veterans Nursing Center, uh, and, uh, give a proclamation on behalf of all of us to a gentleman that turned a hundred and three years old. Chief Navy Officer, uh, Webster, Webster, I can't say his name, Webster, I, I kept saying Webster when I was over, Webster, uh, the, the hundred and three-year-old young man had five red lipstick kisses on his cheeks, and I told him I was quite jealous.
I'll say, which one was yours?
Yeah. Yeah, I was quite jealous of him, so, uh, we wanna wish him a happy birthday, and then we look forward to seeing everyone next week, so our, our scheduled council meeting is on Tuesday, March nineteenth, at six-thirty, uh, so I appreciate you all, and if nothing else, we will close out, thank you.
Thank you, sir.